It being ordered about 7:00 PM, the Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. Planner's report, please.
Sure. So, I presented to the selectmen Tuesday night with the Police Department and DPW to talk, to begin a conversation about uptown parking. I've been talking about this with you folks for a bit, but as we know, Shovel Town's going to be opening soon, theater is up and running.
Soon.
Soon-ish. And so, we want to be, you know, planners and plan ahead. So, right now, there's a bit of a survey open. The word "survey" is an overstatement. It's really just a comment thing. It's being run through Survey Monkey, but folks are putting comments about uptown parking, questions, concerns, comments, and whatnot. So, that comment period is open until June 1st. You can go to the town website, and/or there's around town, there's some QR codes to scan and just to get onto the site. But it really is, and if anybody just wants to send emails, that's fine, too, because we're just looking for input, questions, and concerns. Attached to your planner's report is a new chart with a reorganization discussion. Basically, the departments upstairs have reorganized into what's called the Land Use Division. So, it's now planning, building, conservation, and zoning, and I'm now the Director of Land Use and Economic Development. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, just wanted you all to know, I knew you'd heard a little bit about it, but at town meeting, it sort of became official. So, we're not doing anything just yet about it. I've been sort of acting in that role for a while, but stay tuned for more on that. With respect to commuter rail, thanks to Tom Murphy, we know that we have a couple trains coming to town, starting May 23rd. My understanding is they're midday trains, but we are still hopeful for a strong schedule in the fall. Right now, we're, you know, we don't want these mid-days to count towards our pilot sort of parameters, so this is, we're glad that they're thinking about us. The other interesting thing is, is that the line has been renamed to the Franklin-Foxborough Line, so that's kind of interesting. But we, right now, Mansfield Tom's my expert on this, and Tom says that Mansfield parking is still not full, so we're definitely not seeing full ridership. It's not yet time to start evaluating under the pilot, but it is a positive step that we are getting some trains back, and hopefully, folks will stay tuned for the fall, and we'll get back to a better schedule for commuting. Walnut Street continues to progress twofold, that we're working, you know, with the Housing Authority and the development team there to get the land development agreement going and the design done, but also working on the MassWorks grant application. We've also been trying to support, there's some money, the Governor Baker's forward legislation includes considerable funds towards the Walnut Street intersection. So, Bill Keegan was on Zoom on Monday, ready to testify in support of the project, and actually, Sue Perez, who's on the Housing Authority, was actually in person, so she was able to give some really good testimony. So, we're hopeful that, we're just kind of putting out all the feelers, trying to get every grant opportunity we can, because, you know, the costs are just going up and up. I mean, it was an expensive project last year, and it's even more expensive this year, so for sewer and signal involving the I-95 southbound ramp, so that just makes it that much more complicated. But we feel like we're in good position. The state is definitely well aware of it. The application is going to go under the Housing Authority instead of the town, and stay tuned. So, we're working hard on that. Outdoor dining is still underway. I think I mentioned it before, so far, we have Skip Jacks, The Commons, Union Straw, Foxborough Country Club, and the VFW have permitted. Rally Point and the Shaking Crab have filed, but there's just a couple issues they have to work out before they'll be ready, so we are seeing a return of outdoor dining. The former fire station project, Shovel Town and the four apartments are expected to come online this summer. I think the apartments are ahead of Shovel Town at this point, and then the 15 units behind are not coming online till fall of 2023. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, I just put in the planner's report some vacations. Tomorrow's my last day for two weeks. I'll be back May 31st. Diana's going to be out at the end of May, and then Gabby's going to be out at the beginning of June. And then, the meeting dates are corrected, thanks to Diana. For some reason, I think we're meeting June 6th, but we're not. We're meeting June 9th, so.
So, but going back to the fire station, then, when is, when are they going to take down the house on Market Street, do you know?
It's always a month or so.
And half of the funeral home's down, like a.
Well, it felt, it kind of collapsed when they were doing the footings, so the back kind of fell down, but that's what they had to do, the foundation, to stabilize that, and I know they're, I think they're trying to button up the front, and then they're going to turn their attention to the back, so. We always remind them that we want to know when, and Sam's well aware that we want to watch that come down.
Well, and it needs to come down soon.
Yeah.
I mean, it's in really bad shape.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, town meeting did vote for the sewer, for the people who live on the other side of that house.
Yes, the sewer easement for the Bragg House next to Judy's. Yeah, so that was great. So, they're at least in good position as they need to. And that's all I have for today.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah. Moving fast enough.
Oh, man. Gab, any extra subdivisions?
Actually, I do have a report.
Yes.
We, I visited the site on Lawson Farm for Phase Two with Mr. Buckley. We reviewed the limits of clearing for that face and the emergency path that we required, so they're getting ready to move forward with Phase Two.
Good.
That's it.
Okay. Minutes, April 14th, April 28th?
You got the 14th. Still working on 28th. An extra meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 14th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. I wasn't there. Anything else you'd like to talk about for the next four minutes?
I think we can go ahead, just because this minor mod is not a public hearing.
Okay. So, we have to have a minor modification request, site plan, special permit, add two visitor parking spaces to 17 Glenwood Avenue. Mr. Buckley?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley, and I'm here representing Briarwood Construction, and I think you have in your packet a cover letter and a small copy of this. So, this is the project at 17 Glenwood Ave. It's a six-unit building. The board approved it several years ago. It's actually pretty much completed. What they were doing now is they're getting ready to pave. Actually, they want to pave tomorrow. So, when Mr. Feroni looked at it, right now, the site has adequate parking. It has the number of parking required by zoning, but he wanted to add two additional spaces over here. So, if you were coming in off Glenwood, it took a left, he wanted to add two spaces here. There's already two extra spaces there. He wanted to add two on this side as well, just to get some more visitor parking in there. I mean, there's a lot of parking here, because, you know, Glenwood Ave is going to be, is a cul-de-sac, and it's going to be, you'll be able to park in that area as well around the outside of it, but he wanted to add that. You can see it's parallel parking, which is kind of odd to look at that and go, why is that? The reason for that is because when you have a multifamily against a single or a two-family, you have to have a minimum of 20-foot buffer zone. We don't have that if we went with perpendicular parking, so we went with the parallel parking, but it's oversized anyways. It's 10 by 25. So, that's the change.
Definitely a minor modification. How badly do they really need it?
I don't think they need it at all. It's just something that you would like to see.
So, it's hard to tell from this, right? So, how far would those spaces be from the little shadow buildings that are right there, the single-family home?
So, they'd be 23 and 1/2 feet off the property line. They're required to be 20 feet. That's the setback, and... That's actually a garage on that side with an apartment on top. And that is about, it's about 55 feet.
From where to where, though?
To the garage.
Let me just make sure I did that right. No, I didn't do that right. It's about 27 feet.
27 feet.
So, it's about 27 feet of property line and 23 feet, and it's, you know, 50 feet approximately.
And it's 50 feet across, the two spaces?
50 feet from there to the new parking. And then, the new, this here, that is, I think that's 60 feet, right, Gabby?
No, no, those two new spaces.
10 by 25.
Those are 10 feet deep and 25 feet long each.
So, it's 50 feet long?
50.
Yes.
Is there any screening proposed?
Just what was on the original plan.
Can you remind us what's on the original plan?
There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 junipers in that area, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 white pines.
Okay. Bill, while you've got that plan out, can I see that for a minute?
So, that's in the area, in the 23 feet between the property line and that proposed two parking spaces?
No, it's along that, it's along the parking. It would be less than that if you were just going to.
You pointed on the map like a bedbug.
Right. As soon as Ron gives me that plan.
Right now, that was designated as a grassy area with a prominent planting here, so those won't be touched.
Right. They're going to disappear. So, on the original plan here, you showed a grass area with plantings, and it looks like they're going to disappear when they put these parking spaces there. Is that right?
Yeah, and it won't be grass anymore.
I've got another problem, Bill, that I brought to Paige's attention and Kevin's, and that is when you view this property from 140, it looks like they cleared right to the property. That was not supposed to be the way it is.
I can tell you they didn't.
Well, I can, from 140 at 45 miles an hour, I can see that entire building is clear as a bell.
Well, you're right during this time of year, but I can tell you, they didn't clear the property line. They didn't. I mean, we laid out the limit of clearing for them, and they did.
I just, I found that to be kind of concerning.
I think, what did we leave, a 50-foot? Is it 50-foot buffer along the back there? It's going to be a layout grading plan.
Maybe.
Yeah, it could be.
So... That's a, well, it was a 30, approximately 30-foot buffer along the back there.
He doesn't need this.
No, he doesn't. No, it's not. It's not a requirement.
Yeah, and here's the thing. I mean, you know, so I'm glad you brought this up, because now he's going to, he had a grass and planted area there.
Now, it's going to go away.
Against the neighbor. That's going to go away, just to get two spaces.
Yeah.
And he's coming in the night before he pays at the last minute for this.
I don't like it.
I'm not in favor.
Well, it's not, only the grass, the portion of that grass is going to go away. It's not, the plantings are going to stay there. Those are up against the property line. It's only 10 feet in, so in this particular area, it would be something like, I don't know.
When did he come to you, to you, Bill, with this?
Like, Friday. It would be something like that. So, it's not the plantings, it's just the grass. Are you going to put my plantings there? Do you want to see the plan?
No, I think we should just let it be left alone.
I kind of agree.
I kind of agree.
It's not, it's not going to be critical, you know, the structure's there, everything's going on. It's not going to be critical to the homeowners, and, you know, like you just said yourself, there's going to be more than enough space along the cul-de-sac on Glenwood Avenue there for visitors to park as well. The people next door, you know, don't go out by that cul-de-sac, so, I mean, I just, you know, I'm just not convinced that it's a necessary thing, and that, you know, it's, I'm not saying it's not a minor modification, but I just think it's an unnecessary last-minute modification.
Yeah, the last-minute piece.
It would be nice to give the neighbors, I mean, it's minor, but, you know, the folks that it's, you know, they have this six-unit thing at the end of their street, and now we're adding more to it without any notification, so while it might be minor, I don't know if it'd be minor to them. So, it would be nice to be able to let them know and give them a chance to have a voice. But, Bill, I wanted to ask about behind the building. Do we do, I'm assuming, did we do the buffer strip as required for when, you know, multifamily butts residential? Did we have that behind, because like Ron's mentioning, you know, is it the whole 20-feet parallel of the property line, the screen of plantings? Is that all there, going there or going there?
There's way more than that. It's a 30-foot, it's a minimum of 30-foot left what was there, and then we're doing additional plantings in addition to that. So, there's, the number in my head was like 50, and I think when you include the 30 plus the additional plantings, it's around 50 feet.
So, those plants aren't in yet, are they, are they, like, are the evergreens going to go in there?
They're both. They're not in yet. No, the plantings are not done yet.
I guess, I'm not, I'm not in favor. You know, I feel like this is a rush job, and, you know, he could delay the paving and come in and let the neighbors speak.
Sure. That's fine. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not a big deal. If you want, if that's, if that's the issue, we can certainly do that, but I don't want to waste my time if the answer's no. If you've already thought about it, and the answer's no, I don't want to waste his money, my time, your time. So, I mean, if that's the issue, that we should bring a neighbor in to talk about it, no problem with that. But if the answer is no.
Still going to be no.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to waste my time.
I think it's going to be no.
Yeah, honestly, I feel as well, that it's going to be a no, because we did, I mean, Mike gave some concessions, we gave some concessions. There's a lot of aggravated neighbors here, and kind of rightfully so. This is a pretty substantial building, and I don't really think that we, I'm not in the mood to give it any more.
I agree.
All right.
You mean the motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion to decline the minor modification request of adding two visitor parking spaces at 17 Glenwood.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I miss not, you not having a projector.
Thought it was going to be easy.
It was easy.
Yeah, it was.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. It being sometime past 7:15 PM, we have a continued public hearing, special permit site plan west side of Route 1 to construct four new parking lots and perform improvements to four existing parking lots from NPS LLC. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. Dan with the Craft Group, joined by Beth, Peter, and Kevin from Gulston, and Brittany and Derek from VHB. We've met a couple of times. I think not anything more to present tonight, so I think we'd like to just hear what the Board's thoughts are, maybe get to some conditions, and try to get it out of your hair. And I will say that with the North End Zone project, you might have seen some of the groundbreaking from yesterday. We have been working with Populus, our architect, and VHB, and as promised, we will come back probably in July, I'm hoping. You can carve out some time for us to present the, Enel Plaza, the lower plaza outside the Hall of Fame, and at the base of the grand stair. So, we're getting to be in a pretty good position for that, and we'll come back and show you where we are with it.
Okay.
So, you all have some draft conditions that were sent out.
Mm-hmm.
I will say, since those were sent out to you, we did get some comments back from Gulston, trying to change some things.
So, what were those?
Mr. Chairman, I have copies. I don't, they're essentially, I can review what the changes are, if that would be helpful.
Do you want to, do you have, you said you have copies?
Yeah.
Might as well give them to you. I don't, we have, but Diana might be.
Sir? Thank you.
So, just of note, some of the things that were crossed out are our standard conditions, so we'll have to decide if that's something you want to abandon, and some language that are pretty much in all our permits crossed out.
So, I think if it makes sense, because these are, I can give you some context on, and we can go back and forth, I don't want there to be confusion, so I'll try to be very simple and identify, and Paige certainly can interject if she has any disagreement, but we offered up a condition on noise, which is number one on our list, that...
Excuse me, Peter, do you have any extra copies?
I do.
Just for the folks in the crowd that can take the follow-along. There's one neighbor over there.
Condition one on noise, that there is a noise bylaw, and that use and operation of the garage would, of the parking would need to be in accordance with the Foxborough Noise Ordinance. With respect to a comment that was made from a number of the neighbors, we had, as we'd indicated at the last session, agreed that lots 42C, 44, and 55B not host viewing events. Now or in the future, or storage of materials or equipment. The third condition was a recommendation of your peer reviewer, essentially that there be dedicated pedestrian aisles that are separate, whether by cone and rope or otherwise, to delineate those pedestrian walkways. The fourth was a commitment we made at the last session to have a pre-planning site meeting and invite both the Board, certainly abutting property owners, and we would notice that if it's in the, if that's appropriate, to coordinate final planting locations once the berm has been established. Then there's number five, a detailed, and this seems to have been where we spent most of our time, commitments related to the buffers and screening. And as we'd indicated at the last session, we are committed to planting and landscaping those areas shown on the detailed site plans, and we need to maintain the supplemental plantings for at least two successive growing seasons, and we need to maintain the fence for so long as the parking facilities are in operation.
Quick question. It says a single sided fence. Does that mean that it's, that has special meaning?
You weren't here. It's lineal plank. It's kind of like a highway privacy fence, but it's pressure fitted.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, so subsection A details the nature of the berm.
Thanks.
Subsection B details the fence, and C, the planting detail, all of which is shown on the site plans. Condition six details commitments with respect to stormwater management at the recommendation of your peer reviewer. That is A, B, and C. Seven pertains to lighting, and that the lighting be installed in accordance with the lighting plan and the photometrics plan. And as always, the planning board has the discretion to require adjustments.
So, I apologize. We saw the cross out there. We didn't realize, so I was up there.
Yeah, so a lot of this is consolidation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, that was a comment. We thought they'd eliminated that, but clearly, it's here, so my apologies.
Law enforcement coordination is typically one that you have included in site plans pertaining to the stadium. The minor modification is a variation, and we welcome your thoughts on this. The idea here is that there is obviously quite a few parking spaces that are proposed that will be integrated within the existing parking system, that if Dan sees a need to make a minor adjustment, that we would be able to review that with your planning director, and in her estimation, she can determine whether a minor adjustment is appropriate to the plans, or whether it needs to come back to you.
Paige, how do you feel about that?
Probably good. I mean, I'd probably consult with Kevin, and, you know, it wouldn't be done unilaterally. It'd be sort of discussion.
When we put, we put specific standards to it in anticipation that there not be complete, without a standard, we suggested that any minor adjustment cannot alter the stormwater management design. It can't encroach on the approved landscape buffers, and it can't increase the number of parking spaces by more than 5%.
How many are there now, Peter?
In terms of the proposed parking?
Yeah.
Like, what would that, what would be the 500 represent? You know, I mean, that's, I mean, not the 500, what would the 5% represent? Is it 5% of what?
3,000-ish. It's 2990, so it's 145 spaces, 150.
5%.
Yes.
So, how would that, like, how would that not be major? I guess I'm just trying to picture how that would be. I mean, what are you thinking, that you could just get more efficiencies or something? It's actually creation of a number, or would you actually be expanding the lots up to 5%?
I think we would be amenable. If you wanted to have a hard number, we could put a hard number instead of a percentage. We were kind of thinking along lines.
Right, but I mean, is this like, again, is this a result of efficiencies, or is this a result of expansion?
It's a result of both, either efficiencies. These are obviously not paved lots, but also adjustments that may be made now or in the future before construction commences.
How do you all feel about that? I mean, that's 100, I mean, is that?
150.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that I want that. I mean, I don't know what that looks like, so I don't know.
We are talking about within the EDA, within the stadium corridor.
I'd prefer a number.
Well, and also, taking into consideration that there was a request from the buffers to eliminate 300 and something spaces, which is not a requirement of this as it's written right now, to not only keep the full retinue of spaces, and then say, by the way, we'd like to have the opportunity to just add a whole number, 150, I think is something that we would need to talk about. What, your...
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I guess I can't picture how it would come, but it seems like a...
We would come to Paige anyway, and she would talk with you, Kevin, and she would kick it back to the Board, I'm guessing, so.
Right, but if it's 100, I mean, it might still be, or even 70, I mean, I don't know, to Kevin's point, I just don't know that expansion is, or new numbers due to an expansion should even be contemplated.
Yeah, I think the point is not, I think we'd be comfortable with, there should be a little bit of wiggle room in our estimation, that the planning director can say, okay, you've made an adjustment here, you've maintained the berms, you've maintained the stormwater system, you're not encroaching any further, and you've found some efficiencies. You know, I'd suggest, and I'm looking at Dan, 50 spaces be minor, and anything in excess of that has to come back to you.
And it's no encroachment and no enlarging. It's just, you found a way to get 50 more in, is in the space that already.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are drive aisles, there is coordination between the existing lots and the proposed lots, so a lot can occur by the time these plans become final.
Can I just ask a question about that, and how it applies operationally? I'm just asking, would it not, I'm kind of thinking, in the course of operations on any given Sunday, are your spaces so rigidly applied that you don't have flexibility, and, you know, just almost organically, that happens?
In fact, it's probably the other way around, because, you know, somebody's going to park close to somebody in this instance, and you're going to park 13 feet away in that instance, so the numbers just balloon and compress all the time. So, again, these are kind of reported numbers, so that's why we'd like a little bit of flexibility in there, because we've, you know, VHB's laid them out by, what, nine by eight spots, and, you know, these are gravel spots, and they're not marked generally, other than a center line, and so that number might flex if somebody was ever to go and count them. We might have a little more in there, we might have less, just wanted a little flexibility in there. And to Peter's point, if we can figure out a smarter mousetrap, that would help us as well.
Did they reduce the number of spaces?
No.
Well, from the original proposed, I guess they reduced by...
We, there was a reduction from the, from the initial plans.
About 300.
Okay.
So, so the intent is not to, this is not a backdoor to expand these lots, but we thought that some minor modification language was appropriate, considering the nature of these lots, the number of parking spaces, and the fact that they are effectively add-ons to existing parking operations.
But I kind of think that what Dan references is two different things, like, one, I could see this being more in relation, like, when you submit the ASBIL plans, you know, and suddenly you have 50 more, or whatever number is because of whatever, versus obviously what's out on the ground, that's different, that's day-to-day thing. So I guess my fear is, is that, you know, you'll use this to then take whatever you can, you know, you'll find a way to get extra spaces and the ASBIL, and then this will in fact then be, instead of whatever number, it's 50 more, or whatever the number comes up, so it just feels like that's what, not so much worried about what's out there on game day, but what's recorded at the end of this project as an ASBIL, it's like, seems like you might end up with more.
Well, we would, the way this would work in practice is, between now and the time of construction, if a lot line adjustment was made, for example, or stormwater system was modified, but it wasn't a material change, the design is essentially the same, and we identified, let's say, two dozen additional spaces, we can certainly come back before you, or we could submit a request as a minor modification to you, and you can make that determination based on these standards. That's all we're asking. We're not looking for any exception, and, but we would like a standard, so if it's a hard and fast number, if it's a couple dozen spaces, something that's appropriate, considering that these are large lots.
A couple dozen, I haven't, you know, that's 24.
Do you guys just want to come, have it come to you? Or do you want, no?
I don't think for 24 it needs to.
So what is the threshold that you're comfortable with?
50. Well, she's comfortable with 24.
I was going to say 25.
I guess here's, here's what my thinking is on all of this, and this is not a reflection on the Craft Group and how they do their lots, but in the world of parking lots on Route 1, just because your license or your, or your whatever says you can cap 500 spaces, 1,000 spaces, I can't remember the last time we got an official report from any public safety official about how many parking spaces there were. So, and that, and this is not, again, this is not a reflection on you guys.
It's every lot.
I think in the private lots, it's an issue too. They, they're licensed for X, but if they can squeeze another 20 in, they're going to do it. And I guess, I guess I respect the fact that you're saying, gee, we might have a need for more than we're saying we need, as opposed to just saying, hey, don't worry about it, just shove another 50 in there. So, I mean, I do, I do think it's generous of you to be honest and say, there's a potential here that we could get more, and if we can, can we have them?
Yeah, and there's a fee, obviously, that we pay on those...
Right, that's true too, so. So, I mean, I'm not uncomfortable with the idea of Paige having, having to say so, if she wants to consult with one or more members of the board to just let us know what's going on with that, I'm okay with it. If the members are more comfortable with a fixed number, as opposed to a percentage, I'm fine with that as well.
I'd rather have a fixed number.
In which case, I would suggest 50.
I mean, that's fine, I would be happy with none, because you can come to us at any time if you're uncomfortable. You know, that, that's my only point. But if 50 is fine with me, whatever you want.
Just for the board's consideration, we'd also be, be happy to come to you, as a minor modification, if it met these standards, perhaps we wouldn't need, if it fell below these standards, whatever they may be, you know, we're not impacting stormwater, we're not impacting the buffers, and we're not exceeding X number of parking, you know, parking spaces, that we would come before you as a minor modification, but perhaps in those situations, we don't need to, a notice public hearing. If we exceed any of those exceedances, we would notice, it would be a public meeting. So if you, we don't much care, but we do anticipate that there'll be minor adjustments that are going to be made.
I would be okay with, excuse me, Peter, if, as long as the newfound parking spots would not be encroaching at all on the buffers and getting closer to the neighborhood homes.
That's, yeah, that...
If it grew internally, it's a different story.
So what we've said is, it would be minor if it does not materially alter the approach to stormwater management design, it doesn't further encroach on the approved landscape buffers, and it does not increase the total number of net new parking spaces by X.
But I would contend too, that the lots that are most close to the neighbors, you know, they have an X number that they already know about, that they're not happy about. So even if it doesn't encroach, like, they want more of a buffer, they want fewer spaces, so then what if they miraculously find 50 spaces butting up against the property line again?
That was the point I just made.
Yeah, so it's just kind of like, more intensity right next to the residential, but to your point, if it's in there, it doesn't really matter, so it's almost like, just, and again, I don't think you do, but it's like, we don't want to add more cars and more people and more intense use than what we, you know, for folks that are already sort of taking, you know, gone through this whole process and kind of have it. So that's sort of, I think, where it is, is that you just don't want it near the impacted people and...
I think, I think we agree, I think we're...
But no, because even if you maintain the buffer, and you manage to get, you know, 50 extra cars along somehow along the road, or like, within, you know, right with, close to the buffer, it's still more people, it's more gathering, it's more cars.
So we put, like, it, any additional cars need to be X feet away from...
Well, I mean, I would submit, this is the economic development area, so you look at the purpose and intent of the economic development area, it's not to present limitations, and I think that it's, the buffers and the other conditions here are intended to protect abutting uses, and that was our true intent. But there's literally thousands of cars there, and that's the intent of the EDA, it's not to restrict cars, it's to allow cars, frankly. So, you know, I think we're really, from my perspective, we tried to put some standards to a minor modification. If the board isn't comfortable with this, we can strike the whole thing, just, I don't want to waste your time if you're uncomfortable with it, and we'll just come back before you with an adjustment.
I think, let's just do that.
Okay.
And move on.
One more thing before you do that, I mean, you can do that, but, so you eliminated our number nine about the additional comments from peer reviewer?
Those, those were addressed, that's why they were stricken.
Okay, fine.
Yes, we received the correspondence from the peer reviewer that they were satisfied with the changes and the revisions.
Okay, very good, thanks.
So Dan is saying we should, we should strike the minor modification altogether?
Yep.
So that, that solves that.
Okay.
Our proposed 10 is, I think it was included in yours as well, inspection fees, there won't, we don't anticipate a building permit here, so we included language if any. Final plans was in your standard conditions. Construction coordination, this is for tree protection, we added as, beyond the limits of work, because there won't be tree protection within the lots. Number 13, and interrupt me if I'm going too fast...
Well, I would just ask Paige and Gabby if there's something that's not in theirs that's in ours, that you feel needs to be called out?
Well, the, just the performance guarantee was stricken.
Yeah, so you have a standard condition on a performance guarantee, and we thought about it, I guess ultimately, Dan isn't, doesn't object to having a performance guarantee, but we think it'll be addressed in our last condition, so if you flip to the last, second to last, I'm sorry, the ASBIL. The purpose of the performance guarantee is, as it's suggested, to ensure that the project and improvements are built in accordance with the specifications. So we thought about that, and we have a requirement that an ASBIL be submitted, and we suggest even further that in addition to the ASBIL, that we provide a certification, that the improvements be completed. That way, you get a certification from a professional that, in addition to the ASBIL. So this board doesn't have to waste their time looking at a plan to say, has this met the plans that were, that we approved? If we do not submit those materials, you can suspend the use of the parking lot.
Right.
However, it could sit there, looking like a hunk of you-know-what from the neighbor's yard, and we'd have no financial recourse to finish it.
In reality, we don't have the ability to finish anybody's properties, we can't go on private property anyway.
This isn't a subdivision, there is no covenant here.
Right.
This isn't a vertical project, it's a parking lot. So we thought this gives you, there is, I think, self-interest here in that Dan is interested in operating these lots, and if we don't, in the ordinary course, provide you an ASBIL and a certification, you have the opportunity to say, you can't use them.
Is 90 days normal?
Well, we don't usually have this condition, so...
Right. Well, how do you feel about the lack of a performance guarantee?
I don't really have a problem with it. I mean, again, a lot of times it's for, you know, smaller developers, that we are concerned we wouldn't get ASBILs, or maybe, you know, and maybe some landscaping, although we all deep down know we actually couldn't do anything about it. I think with the crafts, I mean, you know, what are we going to do, $10,000? I mean, that's really not a stick, and again, we can't go on their property, and I do believe they will follow through with what they promised, so I think in this...
I think actually the ASBIL gives us more teeth.
Yeah.
Because I don't think that anybody sitting at this side of the room wants to go back to Mr. Kraft and say, they're not letting us use our lots.
Right, so I don't think in this instance, it's a standard condition, which we threw, that's why we put it in there for consideration, but I think this is a...
Yeah, I think the ASBIL is actually okay.
90 days, okay.
So it's within 90, let me just clarify that, is it, that you could be using it for 90 days without...
Yeah, I, I was, I didn't consult with Dan on this, as I was, Kevin and I were working through it, but we thought 90 days from commencement of use, and certainly if, upon substantial completion of the parking lots, they're going to prepare the ASBIL, but the way surveyors are, and we needed to have a little bit of flex time.
Okay. Dan, Brittany, your thoughts on that for a timeframe? Could it be shorter?
I think we could roll it to 60.
Okay, I prefer 60.
I mean, you could get through almost a whole season.
That was my thinking.
You know, it's like, and again, I just, my fear, I don't think you would do it, but, you know, if you had it half-done, and you started using it or something, we want to make sure, do we have somewhere in here that it says that, you know, stormwater and everything is going to be operational?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, because we want to make sure the improvements are all made, you're not halfway through it and throwing cars out there.
Yeah. So, so that was how we suggested, and if the board's amenable, that's how we would suggest you have essentially an enforcement mechanism to ensure that the plans are completed in accordance with the specifications that you've approved.
Okay.
I'm fine with 60.
Yeah. Item number 14, Paige addresses what you were just brought up. Your drainage system should be functional and installed prior to use of parking lots.
The, the pre-construction meetings and notifications are in your standard conditions.
Is there any language in here about, I know there was a concern by the butters of if blasting is needed, and I know you've made every attempt to avoid it, but I've had to blast in that area. Does it have to be written in here, like, the whole notification process?
That's regulated by state law, I don't know that you need to...
Okay, okay.
So the, I think as Brittany had indicated, there is no intent to do any blasting.
Yeah, we know. I'm just thinking of all...
And if you did have to blast, though, since I'm not totally familiar with state law, is there any requirement to notify us, or would it just be you'd have to do your pre-blast, whatever your protocols are?
Oh, E...
Would we, would the town and our planning board find out?
We can put that in there, the fire department would have to know, because they would participate on-site for the blast, but we can, we can...
Yeah, just in the off chance, I mean, maybe it'd just be good for us to know, because we'd be getting the phone calls, and it would be like, wait, what?
No issues with that.
Dan, does Foxborough require a pre-blast survey?
The state does.
The state does, no?
Yeah. So we wouldn't know, just to clarify, the notification, it wouldn't be like an approval thing, it would be more just merely let us know.
Like, hey...
Yeah, courtesy sort of thing, so we're aware if we got phone calls. And again, we know this is not planning, this is not happening, but just in case.
So, so Paige, would you suggest an additional condition that said, should blasting be necessary, the applicant shall notify the planning office at least seven days prior?
Sure.
So Paige, you know, along, along here, I mean, do you feel that there are things, cover things like your number six about installing and maintaining tree protection, fencing, and other protective measures?
We do have that one, Mr. Chairman.
Are you, are you looking at the color or the, um...
I'm looking at your original versus his.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I think it's on 5.
They did have that in...
And number 12 has the protection of...
Okay, got it.
You know, trees that go beyond the limits of work.
Okay. Yeah, chapter 167 of the town bylaws, does that refer to any noise, or is that strictly on that?
It's the general noise bylaw, so it's...
How the construction noise?
That's a good question.
You're not moving piles of dirt at midnight again.
Yeah, no, it would certainly address a noise like that.
Well, construction is not supposed to happen in Foxborough, only between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
You can move dirt at midnight, right? So that's what I'm...
Well, that, you know, so, so an activity like that would, should be addressed under the noise ordinance.
Can we just put a special condition in that there can be no moving of anything, construction between X the next time?
If the bylaw covers that, it's probably not necessary to do.
But it doesn't sound, everyone's a little wishy-washy.
I'm trying to look it up now to see what, um, what is, construction projects, let's see. No licensed contractor or agent thereof shall perform any outside work, including but not limited to construction, renovation, demolition, loading, or unloading materials, equipment operation, including the running of equipment, motors, between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and all hours on Sunday.
Okay. Covers it.
Good, yep.
So we, we did add at the very end, Paige should...
Wait, may I clarify, though, sorry, I'm just reading on, no, there is the ability to get around it, no work shall be performed beyond the hours specified, or on Sunday, without the express approval of the Board of Selectmen and the issue of a work permit by the Chief of Police. So there is just, there is, you know, there might be exceptions, and we...
So is moving dirt for the stadium events, is that considered construction?
I would think so, I mean, even turning on the machines, it sounds like you can't run, so, so that might something you guys need to recalibrate, if it sounds like you have been...
I'm going back and let those people that run that beware.
We did add, and Paige hasn't had the opportunity to review this, but we added a fairly standard condition on snow storage, and that was, I think, her or Gabby's suggestion. And just put some detail to that. So we, we did move around, I think, the conditions, because they were, they were enumerated 1 through 12, and then 1 through 10 as standard conditions, some of the standard conditions weren't standard conditions, so we just consolidated them, tried to move them, and tried to put headings to them, that's why you're seeing a lot of changes. But for the most part, I think we've tried to respect your standard conditions, with the exception of the performance guarantee, which we've seen in different instances.
What about the well testing?
That was only brought up because it was a couple of board members, that's why I started adding things, because when people called, I was putting notes under it.
Okay.
What do you got?
So, you know, my concern about making the Craft Group responsible for well testing is...
Something go wrong that has nothing to do with them.
Well, even beyond that, I mean, I just think it's a responsibility of the homeowners to be testing their wells on an annual or whatever basis. I think they should be testing their wells before construction begins, once it's completed, they can test again, or wait for, after the first season with the parking and everything else, do a test, and if there are any alterations to quality of water, or some other kind of a problem due to a blast situation, or anything else that goes on up there, then I think that at that point, the Craft Group may have some obligation to, you know, do mitigation of some type. you know, do mitigation of some type, but
Or at least investigation.
To make, to make the testing and the retesting, the purview of the craft group, I don't think is reasonable.
I would agree.
Now, we put quite a bit of time into research with this today. Paige did a lot of research herself. She reached out to the Board of Health, to the Building Commissioner, and we looked at state standards, Walpole standards, Norfolk standards, and what we're basically seeing right here exceeds what they say. They, they're kind of very vague on how you should test your wells, unless you're selling the property.
Right.
Well, and I think the other thing about that was, is, and I'm trying to find it here, I guess I left my printout upstairs, but Matt, the, the agent, the health agent, pointed out that in both Norfolk and Walpole, roadways would be allowed closer to the private wells than these non-gravel, you know, these gravel parking lots are. So, I mean, they have standards, their setbacks aren't 100 feet, you know, already for improvement, so it's kind of adding an extra layer of requirement that isn't even in their own regulations for their own improvements around it. So that was sort of, I think, his point was like, it's, there are standards already in the two towns, and these would exceed those standards.
I, I do have one question. We have in the condition number 14 drainage system, that the drainage system shall be functional prior to the use of the parking lot, which is fine. Can we add something to the buffers and screening?
It is in there, Gabby, in, I believe, five? Kevin and I was just looking at that.
No.
Not about that.
No, no. What was it? Where were we?
We'd just like to make sure that the berm and the fences are up before the parking lots are used.
There's something I just read that said that.
You mean the stormwater pollution prevention?
No.
Oh, here it is.
We, I, I think, Gabby, to your suggestion, perhaps you could preface condition five?
Yeah, I, I misread it. This was the maintenance of it. I thought it was the actual
But I think that's a good installation.
I think the installation should be completed.
So, so we could, we could revise condition five, which starts with buffers and screening to say prior to use of the lots, comma, the applicant shall.
Yep.
The only thing I would, berm and fence, it just might not be the right planting time of the year for our varieties, and if I have to own them for two years, I'd like to plant them at the right time.
So you could do fence?
Fence and the berm for sure, and then
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, that's fair.
So we can, we can revise that with Paige and Gabby's help to, to essentially say, prior to use of the lots, the applicant shall establish
The berm?
The berm and fencing.
And then something to, like, just to close up the loop, maybe make sure the trees will be planted
Right, planting is impossible, planting is possible depending on the time of year.
And I know Jeff had that question. I got your note, Jeff, that you were concerned about their, how, how are you gonna maintain those trees if they're on the other side of the fence?
As I said, they weren't. That, the question I had is on the original thing, when we're talking about the standard conditions, there was a there was a condition there that conflicted with the, basically, what is number five here, in that it talks about maintaining that plantings in perpetuity.
Oh, versus the two years?
Correct. We had, we had talked about that two weeks ago.
So it was just a conflict? It wasn't the concern of how you were gonna order it?
No, 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 it was just the verbiage was
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood that.
A quick question about snow. I'm, I'm sure you've got your sort of general designated areas. In the rare event that we're actually gonna have in-season snow, as opposed to postseason snow, where you're bringing it over from across the street, just to truck it and get it off, off that site. Do you have, like, sort of designated areas, or is it, you know, it kind of depends on conditions, or?
No, generally, so 55A, which, you know, 55B is in the piece that we're
Right.
making, on the northern side of 55A is one of the prior, when we built those lots, whatever, 15 years ago, that was one of the designated snow storage areas. And the same thing holds true with Lot 42C, which is one of the expanded lots. We, we use 42B as a portion of that as a snow storage lot.
So is there a way to ensure, not hearing the, the concerns of the neighbors and the stormwater system and the proximity and all that, is there a way to ensure that the snow isn't ending up over on their side of things, just to make them feel that? I don't know how logistically you do it.
There's a berm and a fence and landscaping, there will not be
Okay, just a second. Then, I don't know how it's actually handled, but I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, because I don't know how they'd get it over it.
Well, even up against it, I mean, you know.
By placing the snow in a, in, in one of the parking lots, it will then melt and be directed towards the stormwater management system.
And is this in the aquifer, in the water resource district at all? And where you put any of the snow?
No.
Anything you want to add, Paige?
No, I did finally find the papers I thought I left upstairs. And just to clarify, so Norfolk regs are, let's see, the sideline, no well shall be closer than the distance stated for components listed below. And then, so the well cannot be any closer than 40 feet to the sideline of a public or private way or street. So that's, you know, again, you can have a street within 40 feet of the wells. And then in Walpole, it was 15 feet. So that was sort of Matt's point, is like, already they're allowing roads within it, and so that, just to close that one off.
And there's no place that the parking lot's gonna be anywhere near that to a property lot?
Good.
Just a reminder, you have a special permit and a site plan, and in the special permit, you have to make findings. Which I believe were provided, correct? Did you guys write?
Yes.
I don't see findings.
No, we didn't give them to you. I'm looking for them now. We had them a long ago, but they've been, they've been buried. Here they are. Start with, to see if Tracy can handle it before we do copies. That'll take a little while.
What do you need to do?
Read them.
I can do that.
And weep.
Have to read all of these?
Well, yeah.
Or just the criteria?
Well, yeah, both probably.
Should read them all to the record.
Before, yeah, so you have to
There you go.
The, the, just to set the stage, the following table explains how the project to centralize event day parking operations in areas proximate to the stadium, title of the project, on portions of the stadium property within the special use zoning district S1, fulfills the special permit criteria set forth in section 10.4.2 of the Foxborough zoning bylaws, bylaws. And the following, and the Foxborough Planning Board, rules and regulations. Criteria: Harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaws. Bylaws section 1.1 and rules article 2, section A. The project is designed to complement the general purpose and intent of the bylaws, and is harmonious with the stated purposes of the S1 district in which the project is located. The project will protect the health and safety of town inhabitants by promoting safe and effective traffic and pedestrian movement on major stadium event days. Improved pedestrian and vehicular flow will facilitate economic activity for businesses within the EDA and along the Route 1 corridor, before, during, and after major stadium events. The project is not anticipated to result in any new demand on town services or infrastructure. Rather, it is anticipated to decrease such demands by improving traffic from Route 1 on major event days. Second criteria is adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. Bylaws section 10.4.2 and rules article 2, section A. The traffic, safety, economic, and environmental benefits of the project outweigh any adverse effects. The project is designed to further promote safe and effective traffic and pedestrian movements on major event days by further consolidating parking. The project area is zoned for commercial use, S1. By further improving traffic conditions and enhancing safety on major event days through the improvement of pedestrian facilities and delayed exit parking lots, the project will help, one, promote and sustain local and regional employment opportunities, and, two, facilitate further economic activity within the S1 Economic Development Route 1 corridor before, during, and after major stadium events. Criteria: Community needs served. Bylaws section 10.4.2, parentheses, one, and rules article 2, section A. The project advances community needs by continuing to improve traffic flow and enhance safety on Route 1 during major events at the stadium. The project will, one, help to centralize parking in the corridor by expanding capacity of established parking areas by approximately 15%, approximately 3,100 parking spaces. Result in improvement in the overall flow of traffic and pedestrian safety along Route 1 by increasing the available centralized parking supply proximate to Gillette Stadium, where vehicle and pedestrian activity are under the careful control of the Gillette Stadium Event Traffic Management Plan. And expand opportunities to offer additional delayed exit parking to patrons in order to attenuate peak traffic flows along the Route 1 corridor after a major stadium event. This enhances vehicle and pedestrian safety, and will continue to improve the overall event day experience and safety for both patrons and the general community. Criteria: Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Bylaws section 10.4.2. The project is designed to result in an improvement in the overall flow of traffic and pedestrian safety along Route 1 by increasing the available centralized parking supply proximate to Gillette Stadium, where vehicle and pedestrian activity are under the careful control of the Gillette Stadium Event Traffic Management Plan. And expand opportunities to offer additional delayed exit parking to patrons in order to attenuate peak traffic flows along the Route 1 corridor after a major stadium event. Criteria: Adequacy of utilities and other public services. Bylaws section 10.4.2. The project will not adversely impact any town utilities or public services. Vehicle and pedestrian access to the parking areas that are subject to the centralized event day parking plan have been purposely designed to use the existing infrastructure that has been constructed to support the parking infrastructure for the stadium, which is already integrated into the TMP for major stadium events. These accommodations will be extended and improved in conjunction with the centralized event day parking plan. Criteria: Neighborhood character and social structures. Bylaws section 10.4.2. The project is designed consistent with the design approach implemented for existing event day parking, which supports the character and social structures of the surrounding area. The project will promote economic activity by improving traffic operations and patron safety on major event days, and will provide for ample natural or vegetated buffers to surrounding uses. Criteria: Impact on the national, national environment. Bylaws section 10.4.2. Overall, the project will expand the utility of the existing event day parking lots with little if any adverse environmental impacts. The project improves upon existing parking areas located within the EDA and S1 zoning districts across from Gillette Stadium, and is designed to include pervious materials and stormwater management facilities that meet or exceed applicable regulations. Criteria: Potential economic and fiscal impact to the town, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. Bylaws section 10.4.2 and rules article 2, section A. The project will support and improve the major event day patron experience at Gillette Stadium, which provides direct economic benefits to the town of Foxborough through event ticket fees and taxes. The project located within the S1 district will also further the long-term viability of existing and future public and private infrastructure and development in the S1 EDA, an area designated for further growth, thereby solidifying municipal revenues and employment opportunities at the stadium and in the surrounding area. Construction of the project will also support a number of construction period jobs.
We'll have it back, but in a second.
No, I said, who wrote that?
So basically, the board, so those are the findings. Also, the other note, and it's good we mentioned this, is that Tracy was absent for one session?
I was absent. I did watch the, I did watch the hearing, and I am mulling it.
So she does have a Mullins Rule exception filed, so just to clarify, she is eligible to vote. So there would be two votes, and it'd be a site plan and a special permit. And I would say that in your vote, in addition to approving or denying, you would affirm whether you agree with the findings.
Just gonna say that. So your motion to, your approval of the findings is read into the record? So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to accept the I'm sorry, do we need to close first?
Yeah, you have to close the hearing.
You can close it, or you, it does close when you vote, but either way, you typically close.
Then I'll close the public hearing.
Second.
Are there any comments?
At this point, I, I think there's, I mean, you folks have been very good in sharing a lot of information with us, and I think the craft group has done a good job in responding to it. We, we've taken this as far as we can take it.
I just have a couple of questions.
There's a motion on the floor. We gotta do something with it. There is a motion on the floor, and I think that we have heard everything that we're gonna hear. I know you have questions, but I don't think that there's anything new that's gonna alter the fact that we're
And feel free to ask them of the craft group, if you like, after the hearing.
I don't think there's anything more that we're gonna hear that's gonna, you know, alter the direction of this board at this point.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan. As admitted.
Based on?
With conditions.
With the conditions. With conditions.
Yes.
With the modified conditions as discussed.
Go ahead, here's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And what was the final one, for special permit? I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit based on the findings, site plan, and all items that have been discussed this evening.
Second. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to adjourn.
We have one Mylar's. We have Mylar's? Yes.
But we can adjourn.
Mylar's to sign.
You have to vote. Oh, they don't vote to that, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
Is there a second to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.